First of all, let me just say thank you for allowing us to come in and share and try to look for a solution to the problem that we're having at the church. I think you're all aware, through your employee here, D. Harvey. On two different occasions, we've had very, very bad backup within the church. And I don't know if he showed you some pictures or not, but I have brought some pictures that I would like you to look at. And I think a lot of the problems is coming from the outside sewer on the outside of the church. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we don't have a problem, but when we have a big, heavy rain downpour to where it's uncontrollable, that's where we have our problem. And it backs up through our commode and it goes all over the sanctuary. Well, I should say about a quarter of the way of the sanctuary. But it's enough that it causes a huge, huge problem. We just remodeled the bathroom, and it's a disaster. And I'm sure if you look at the pictures, that you would see it's ruined the vanity, it's ruined the floor downstairs, and it's come out into the fellowship hall, it's went into a senior superintendent's office. And Bertie and Dee, I think you're all familiar with them, they have to go down there and clean it up. And it is one tough job. I mean, it is hard. But the thing of it is, we're looking for a solution to get it fixed. That's what we're looking for. We're not here to point fingers and say, "You're fault, they're fault, I'm fault of anybody's fault." It's a problem that needs addressed and to make it better. And we hope that you should consider some... I did get two estimates of what it would cost to get it fixed. And I could give you them estimates if you want, but... Have... Harvey?
Ernie.
Oh, right, my friend, you. We was talking deep in, we took some pictures also. And we sort of feel that if there'd be a flapper put on the sewer to keep the water from coming back in too, that that would probably take care of the problem, which I think that was a very good suggestion, you know?
It's what you and I talked about yesterday.
Yeah.
You know, I think we need to take all... Try all things as possible, you know, before anything else. But it would be a lot less expensive to put a flapper on it, a whole lot less. The estimates that we do have, they're from contractors, but if there'd be some way that yous could help take care of the problem, we have guys in the church that can fix the floor, that can put a new floor down, that can put everything in, and it would save a whole lot of money. The estimate is somewhere around $1,200 for the floor, which I think you could get by with a lot less than that, you know what I mean? But we do need to address the problem. They spend, when it pisses a little flush, how long does it take you to clean that up? Enjoy it.
Well, it was me and Dee and her husband, and I think it took us all afternoon to clean up all the water. We finally went and bought and wet back, so we'll have that now.
Yep. It's just a gigantic problem. And then, not only that, but then after they do get it cleaned up, we have a lot of different things that goes on like that. And the smell after it's there for several days. And so, it's just a big problem. It really is. But would it be all right if I showed you a couple of pictures that I think you might understand what we're fighting against, I would hope?
Did you order a flapper?
I got the flapper ordered as soon as it comes in, I'll get it with him and I'll put it in. It's really easy to do.
Okay. This is the sewer which we're talking about, which I'm sure yous all is familiar with that, right outside of the... Here's where I think all the problems coming in at. That was then when they was cleaning up the difference downstairs. This was outside of the sanctuary. You can see how dirty the floor is right there. I mean, it's just... There was three or four bags full of stuff that we had to dispose of because of... You can see the difference in the floors right there. There were some things we had to dispose of. And it's just, this is brand new floor, brand new floor. This is what I want to... Here's what's back there. See?
Yeah. Well, we're worried about that problem.
And again, it's just, there's lots of... This is the little vanity, it's got it burned up in here. Well, that's all. But I'm sure, I'm sure that there's a solution to this problem, you know? I do understand that P M O N is on a limited budget. I do understand that. But yet, at the same time, it's costing us money, and we're having to shut things down and everything, you know, to address this problem.
Okay. It's how much it will cost.
Paul, Dee and I went down to bake pies that day for the home fest and ended up cleaning up water and mud.
And I don't know if you should be invested in this or not. I did get estimates, you know, what it would cost. But if we don't have to go this way, I... You know what I mean? Because it's, you know, contractors, but...
As soon as it comes in, I'll get with you and I'll get it put in, and that should solve your problem.
Okay, well...
When you get that, I'll be with you.
I just have one more question. Can we get any help with the, with the purchase of the remodel and getting the materials?
That's going to be tight. We don't have the money to do much with this it is now. But we can see what we can do, is all I must have to tell you. I mean, we can see what we can do.
That's the best. You can't say that's our problem, you can't say that's our problem, you know what I mean?
Well, it's definitely, it's definitely the outside problem. It's not the church's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know it, and I know how the sewer is laid out there. I mean, we've been through this enough that, you know, it's definitely the town's problem. And you do a lot of that also. Let's go.
I know it's been a problem for longer than what we've been in office here. It's been probably for 20, 25, 30 years it's been a problem. And we're not too sure what it is, because every while, we've been getting a lot of the runoff like we're getting now, and can't figure out where it's all coming from. But we will do it too, and we will see what we can do. But I'm not laying blame nowhere, because like I said, it's an old system, it's been in there for a long time. So until we can dig it up and see what's underneath or what's in there, that's about all I can say. He's ordered the flapper valve, and we'll go from there. Once we get it, then we'll be doing it, we'll dig it up, and we'll see what we can do about rectifying the problem.
Well, that's something fair enough that maybe you'll know how to make it, I hope. That's what we're hoping for.
We had to wait for another big rainstorm.
Once we get in there...
I'll be tested once I put it in.
Yeah, once we get in there...
Are these other two on the list, your people too? Was that the other guy that's supposed to be here on your list?
Um, he's walking. Yeah, he's walking over time, so he's unable to make it.
Okay. So you're on his side now.
But I think that'd be fair enough, rectify that.
But we will definitely, as soon as that flapper valve gets in there, we'll get that over there, we'll get that opened up, we'll see what we can do.
Won't need the... I can install it without digging anything up or doing any damage.
Okay. Well, that's good. Less damage, less digging, that's fine with that.
Okay. Thank you so much for the person who gives him the decision.
And I'll get ahold of it. I'll get ahold of you when it comes in soon, you know, let me know.
Okay. Okay, that's fair enough then.
Everybody read the minutes from last year.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks. I want to apologize for not having the meeting, the last meeting, but we had to back up ourself here. Awful backup, and the city building was closed for two days. We got it rectified, but God bless T.I. and Ernie, because I don't think I could have dealt with what they dealt with in there.
Didn't snow that bad?
Yeah. And T.I. took a run of it too. I feel bad for him. That was awful. I'm glad that's taken care of. Hopefully not to happen again. If the churches take care, maybe this whole section will be awful. Okay, correspondence? Take care of that.
Okay, this is from the Division of Highways. The subject bills require the Division of Highways to lease our right-of-way and enforce a dig wants policy to inform all PSDs, utility boards, and municipalities of the guidelines and explanation of laws. We are requesting that dependents of the person who will be responsible for signing the leases to meet on Tuesday, July 24th, at the District Five Complex in Burlington. If you cannot attend, please call. That was Pace Fangler.
Yes.
Did they reschedule it?
They did, I wasn't told.
Okay.
But basically, we're going from when we do a dig or repair on state highways, paying that little fee, to doing a full-blown lease and nobody's sure what it should have cost yet.
Okay. I guess they'll send us another letter when they reschedule it. And then we have one from the West Virginia Solid Waste Authorities. They are having a educational conference on litter control and solid waste management on October 28th to the 30th at the Stan Martin Jackson Resort in Rannick. Is that something you're interested in doing?
Not really.
Just asking.
Litter control, waste solid management, we really don't need that, dude. If anybody would be interested, that's it. The Mineral County Farm, there's going to be a Mineral County Farm Show at Tractor Supply this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. I'm only announcing this because it states that fresh produce from Mineral County Farms and the combined county farmers markets are all going to be in attendance. So that may mean we won't have a farmer's market on Saturday. I'm not positive if they didn't contact us, but by reading that, it sounds like they're all going to be down there, so...
What time is that?
That's from 9:00 to 2:00. That's, yous got something to do with that too, don't they, Jean?
Uh huh, yeah.
And I got a call from Sally Bartley from Kaiser, she's a pastor in Kaiser. They're going to have college students on August 13th that's working for the, was it Vista? And they were, they're trying to find places to place these students to do work. She asked us how many we wanted. I told her as many as she could supply, but it's August 13th from 10:00 to 12:00. She said she would probably bring us about, could send us about 20 of them. So we're going to try to get some work done throughout the town that needs done, that the bench is painted and stuff while they're there. Like I said, they're the older kids, so we can put them in different areas of the town and get some work done.
Like we did last year? The two young fellows I had with me paid some money?
Were they here a couple of... Yeah, they must have, yeah.
Yeah, that was in...
That's August 13th this year.
Right, good, right.
Get that out of the way. Rhonda Allen, a resident on Asherell Street, appeared to be and said that she had been in Romney, and she saw these in the city, and she thought that they might be something we could be interested in doing. They're pretty cool. We don't have the meter poles anymore, but it's something like, we take place in the barrels, they flush them up on the streets. But they have their little wrought iron things made by HMI Metal Works right there in Romney.
Yeah, we hit one, huh?
Huh?
We hit one, huh? Just put my truck up.
Really?
I guess worse than a barrel would.
Oh, yeah.
Speaking of barrels, Ernie, did you ever get those two barrels from A1G to pick up to be used?
Be right there.
Remember when Ben was still here, he mentioned about taking the bands off of those barrels?
Yeah.
You got two of them?
Yeah. They're down in the...
Okay. I said, she shared them in Maine, I thought I'd share them to you, that's maybe something to think about, you know? They are pretty.
How much they worth?
She didn't say, but I looked into it, because I'm like, I actually got to go to Romney next week.
You can't miss them, they're all along Main Street.
That's what they said, and she said they look very nice.
Along Main Street.
But they're a pain in the butt, they are.
Are they?
Yeah, those look nice, you know?
What?
Those look really nice and do a dinner, if not memories money for it.
Uh huh.
Lost my pen though.
That's all. I roll them. There it is. Okay. That's all, correspondence. Anybody else have any correspondence?
We did have one from Region Eight. All Region Eight's counties were deemed natural disaster areas after all the rain.
Oh, yeah, we got that here before.
And I need to call Ingy Curl and get the particulars. We may be able to get some money for like ractail that's second again sliding. Our tank area up here, there's some little bit of slide evident up around the tank, so...
I do remember seeing that.
I'll get with her and get the information, and if we need, get paperwork started. Or at least get her name in the list so we get, get on there.
Okay, I forgot, and I got a message from Joe Shoemaker from Duckies. He would like to know if we could send a letter to the church asking them to cut the grass, because it's like two foot high, it's knee-high. He said he would actually cut it, but he thinks it would cause problems because they don't get along very well. But he wouldn't be beyond cutting it, but it actually does need cut. It's, except you come into town, you see grass is high. They threw a fence up. I don't know if they think they don't have to cut it because there's a fence out of it. Well, like I said, I saw, I'm not a social media person, but I saw on social media that somebody's not happy with our police force and stuff that's going on there. The only thing in the whole conversation that upset me was they were trying to say that our town workers couldn't cash their checks because our checks bounced. I'd like to make it known, I don't remember a check bouncing here. And that's, they're making the town sound awful. I wish the people that would put that stuff on here would come here with their complaints and stuff, throw it all over social media, but they won't. So I just, just that's, that's the only part I hated to see, was where they're trying to say that the town workers can't even cash their checks because they're going to bounce. That hasn't happened as far as I know.
You're going to get one out of each town.
Huh?
You're going to get one or more out of every town, so you can't please everybody. Kind of learned that.
Okay, officers report?
Well, they had to get a new computer reviewed there at the apartment, maybe more space done up. Yeah, that didn't matter. Other than that? Not much, still missing, Eric's still going. He's gone for what, another month anyway?
Yeah, they had to build up coppers.
Oh, really?
It was in the same week.
His orders got changed, and he had more, got more days to put in.
Oh, really?
So them people, we can get them serious.
Where's he at, Minnesota or something?
Let's see, I knew this month he's in Morgantown doing railhead duty. Then he'll be up in Michigan next month.
Michigan.
And then I don't know where he'll be after that.
Yeah, I was talking to my nephew last night, he's a recruiter, and he said, "I'll be going to talk table."
Yeah, that's why we're a little behind.
Yeah.
But we're trying.
Tell him that, that seems good.
All right.
Other than just trying to catch up on everything that we can, I mean, we're way behind. If we can get some volunteers, it'd be nice, you know, but nobody seems to want to help out the town too much anymore.
On the 13th, you're right out.
I could make up a list for the 13th and see what we can get.
Oh, we got enough grass to cut from 13th. Like I said, if I could get them sooner than that, I'd love to, because like I said, we've got a lot of grass that we're buying on.
Or if you need to get the lawn mower from the pool to help you somewhere.
Well, it's not so much that, it's...
Around the town?
Right, it's just every place it has to be done, and we only have three or four people. And if we can get some volunteers, that's it. But, you know, I know the, a lot of people's complaining about the grass and the trees sticking out where the buses is hitting them. I mean, we have plans of doing a lot of that, we do have some of the tools.
Make a list that where they can divide up how many people need to stop.
Well, some of this, you know, we can't have them doing like cutting trees out of the way, you know, and that's something we'd have to take time to walk 46 off. We got the buses, the bus drivers complaining that you want to pay for a paint job when they go up Ferragamo Street, okay? We already talked about how we want to do that. We go across that clear, cut the dirt, and it's just the time to do it.
And the people there.
Right, okay, that's the thing. And by the time we get them all together, the next you know, well, we got another water leak over here. Well, there goes that idea, so we got to go fix this line, or we got a sewer, or, so, and that's, like I said, but your social media, I try not to pay any attention to. That's why I hate to be like that, but a lot of the people that has asked me for finger requests or, you know, I don't because I don't want to listen to the social media that they have to say, because it's not worth the time for me to look at. If you want to complain, fine. If you have a solution, I'm all ears, and so is Ernie. We're all ears if you have a solution. Or if you want to say, "Hey, I grabbed a broom and helped you," or a paintbrush, okay? So far, I've had one person said, "Take help." Karen Amoruson said she would paint the lines over her street, I've been there. If everybody else would paint the lines in front of their house or this and that, that's one project we would have to worry about. But as far as our police force, I think they're doing a good job, okay? And as far as a few that have a problem with it, I guess they're on the wrong side. That's why we have a problem. But other than that, I don't have anything else to add, other than like I said...
Yeah, we had several of them, one of their main ones is the stop sign on top of Kenny House.
Right.
I questioned them that too. The answer is, that's a designated bus stop area that had to change from here to stop.
Right.
If you don't stop at the stop sign, we have a problem now, you will get stopped.
What's his effort to stop?
And the same with the stop signs back here.
Oh, that's, that's...
It takes seconds to stop.
The same is...
You know, back here, the stop signs in New York, we get at Craig Box, it's always been the same thing. Squirrel was bad for that.
And we got the slow children up there.
Right.
It has helped some.
Well, like I said, it's...
Well, I'm back there, I still, I still yell at people.
It's time that...
Hey, slow down!
It's time that, you know...
Some of them cuss me, but other than...
They can handle things here.
Yeah.
But no, I don't have anything, or he's doing a, I think he's doing one hell of a job for this.
Ernie, then you got something to throw in there?
I mean...
Yeah.
I'm really good.
Managed to get several potholes fixed, a lot of them down on ractails, so somebody can go speed them. Wood lawn, up toward the water plant, fixed several up there. Also, on a sore subject, the plant flowers have been relocated from in front of the pool to next to the river.
Yeah, thank you.
That goes up, back up and running. Duck went down, spent several hours, and got it worked on. After T.I.'s little venture Friday, I went around and sprayed all the bees' nests I could find around the pavilion, the park, the pool, and around the city building here.
Did you get that one in the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
We also need to either find or get the backflow prevention ordinance signed. We either need to find the original that's signed, or we need to do the process to get this one signed.
What's it called then?
Backflow Ordinance. That is one of the things the State Health Department is pushing. They want a backflow prevention system in for like the funeral home down here, so there's no chance that any contaminated water getting back into the system. Other than that, that's all we got at this time.
Okay.
Well, I want to thank Ernie and his crew, and Duck, and everybody who worked really hard to get the town moved to home fest. It was, it turned out really nice. Total raise for the home fest from the raffles and the wristbands and home fest royalty, we got $1,884 in 10 seconds start off of next year.
Cool.
We raised $805 for the truck pool per gauge. The next bad buildings meeting is August the 16th at 6:00 for the committee members.
Is that?
August the 16th. They stopped in on Monday and picked up our surveys.
What time?
6:00. I've got the flyer ready for the 9/11 memorial parade. I'm working on more details for that, but I'm getting that out to everybody. Hopefully, we can have a large turnout for that. And now that home fest is over, the letters are going out for properties again, so...
Okay. The pool is running okay. Everything's been running swell when we're allowed to open, and we can open because of the rain, but it's been hindering. Anything positive about that is we don't have a big payroll. Life guards aren't happy, but Duckies is going to have their first annual community pool party Saturday the 28th from 5:00 to 8:00. They'll provide the main course and the pool for the night, and they are asking people to bring a covered dish to share, and they're planning on serving smoked chicken, burgers, hot dogs, and more. They're hoping to make that an annual event. So that is Saturday the 28th, they were called Duckies, hosted by Duckies.
What time is this story?
5:00 to 8:00. I believe they're serving the food at 6:00. And as Ernie said, we got the flowers taken out from in front of the pool. That whole length is like 212 feet. Jack is supposed to bring a small chub to fill in until the time comes that we can get the sidewalk put in. So at least when you park your car, you can get out and step on dirt and not stuff in a bunch of...
Do you want to put grass back in there?
Probably.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying...
No, we're putting the mulch in till we did it, so we don't need grass put in there.
That would just be harder to dig it up for the sidewalk.
We're going to put the bug dust in there, and we're going to put the mulch in there. And we may get concrete sooner than we think. I'm looking at a couple of options, so...
That should just be harder to dig it up the sidewalk.
You can put the bug dust in there, and we're gonna put the mulch in there. And we may get concrete sooner than we think we're, I'm looking at a couple of options. So. We still have, like, forty-five. Fourteen, fourteen parties booked. People still calling, so everything's running smooth at the pool. Just when we're able to open because of the rain. Kaiser is gonna open up for three weeks. I think they're gonna try to open up Saturday for three weeks. So, we're hopefully trying to share lifeguards. I told my lifeguards longer days off, if you wanna make some money, go down there and help them out, so. We'll see how that works. I hope they can do this back, open back up, I mean. But so much you.
Three weeks is a story, yeah.
I don't understand why it closed at the end.
All right. Police report.
Well, I kinda agree with you all on that, I think we're actually doing a good job. Overall, we're having most of the citizens in town tell us that you're always behind somebody that isn't happy. You can't make everybody happy. But I was always told if you at least didn't have one person complaining, you're not doing your job. With that being said, uh, we ended up having a total of seven criminal investigation opened up this month. Um, we did manage to close a few of them as well, so they're not all opened still. Uh, we ended up doing twenty-three citations as of today's date. Um, seven warnings. We had nineteen calls for service. A total number of activities were fifty-three. Um, we had two narcotic charges this month. Ended up with four arrests, which included larceny charges. Uh, we did get these citations up and running, so it's going, going smooth. Uh, let's see, we've been continuing traffic enforcement, which is evidently upsetting some people. Um, but that has led to us actually seizing narcotics, which is a good thing. Um, and I think you had something to add as well, didn't you? What we've been talking about, throwing around ideas up?
Oh, yeah, um, we've been throwing around ideas for like, you know, doing an event for like the children. You know, it was one, one idea came to mind, I was like, you know, having them watch the movies with police officers, like, pool or something like that, and call like Pigs in a Blanket, something like that, you know? Let people know we have some humor. And we're not uptight and mean people, especially me since I'm big.
Maybe some food reference.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta do something around here.
Yeah, we just wanna move the action, everyone did you guys, so. But we can have another.
Yeah, we, we love that song.
Oh, and we sing and head picks it up.
I can't sing, but I'll think of something. Yeah, we just, just let people know we have some humor, we're not mean. Some people say we are, but you know, they'll get over it. But we just wanna have an activity with the kids, just letting know to people around here that we care, we ain't here to do mean, to buy out tickets. We care for the kids and, you know. I might play basketball for them down there, hopefully none of them hurt me, so I'm in uniform. So they can't run me around. On the court, but you know, just, we just wanna, if anyone's got an idea for throw around or throw idea to us, 'cause we're trying to think of ideas, but anyone's input would be awesome. I'm young, I'm ready, I can do stuff. This old one right here, he'll stay and watch.
Like Nick and Chuck, right?
Yeah.
You know, just, going on your dudes, just throwing it. Did you also mention the amount, money and everything too?
No, I sure didn't.
Um, so far, since I took, we've written, it looks to be six thousand and seventy-five dollars in citations.
And, um, we made actually, uh, three thousand, or not made, but wrote over three thousand in one day. And it's actually from fourth of July, and that's when we seized the narcotics. So, but ever since he's taken over the reins, over six thousand. Actually, almost seven thousand, but we had all, we had a mistake with, uh, one day amounts, so it was actually sixty-nine hundred. But you know, it wasn't something you lose.
Cool. All right.
You wanna say anything about Spirit?
I have an unfinished business. Okay, new business. Well, everybody has heard, um, Vicki Smith has resigned as finance commissioner. So we have to have a motion to have her name taken off the bank account.
I'll make a motion to accept Vicki's resignation and remove her name from all the bank accounts.
On bail? Opposed? I got too many papers today, I'll eat too much. I thought I had. Yeah, it's up to us, I was trying to find out, I printed it out on West Virginia Code. Oh, there it is. When a vacancy shall occur for any cause, an unmem- municipal elective office of vacancy will be filled by appointment by the governing body from among the residents of the municipality eligible under the law. So right now, we have, we've, I've talked to a couple of people. Not many people are very interested in doing anything, but we're gonna keep on looking and hopefully by the next meeting, we can have somebody to appoint, or have a special meeting to get somebody appointed, because we do need a finance officer. But it's up to the, the council to choose who to appoint, so.
What most people wanna be on it, when we got people running it out.
Could possibly somebody put out there in the paper something that we could use a volunteer? To volunteer for the, for, to get somebody to choose from, I mean. How else, I mean, we gotta find somebody, I mean. Other than how else we could do it?
I'm gonna continue to call several people. And they have been saying they.
Like y'all said, there's always people that's interested in doing much at all, you know, even sweeping their sidewalk and things.
Um, P. Martin. What if we're seeing everybody's own social media?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, tell them, you know, we need a finance commissioner, is anybody willing to jump on board to help us out?
There. Okay, we wanna do the swearing in of the officers, or wait till we get everything else done? Do that now, Kim?
Yeah, we can.
Lost that face. That's my, they brought me one. There it is.
All right, please bring in. I.
I.
Name?
Clayton Perry, I, James Cummins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
Constitution of the State of Virginia.
And the municipal code of the city of P. Martin.
And the municipal code of the city of P. Martin.
And I will honestly.
And will honestly.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform my duties.
Imposed upon me under the provisions of law.
Imposed upon me.
Or the provisions under law.
And a member of the municipal police department.
And a member of the municipal police department.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We've done like three of these, and you're screaming. That, I feel my makeup's blowing.
Are you reminded of the little homie?
And we got you a little law enforcement paper on.
Then you have to, you're a lawyer.
Thank you. It's probably the strangest in those, those that's ever been done here, probably.
Welcome aboard, guys.
I was on Facebook, you'll see on Instagram or either.
He's plugged in the bottom of the sinking ship.
Okay, Bennett said something to me, um, Jean, about the news tribune car show, that's September first. That's the city of P. Martin.
It's here, where's the one been here? Lady parking lot. Oh, okay.
What time's that?
What time's that?
I thought I had.
He said he was gonna send you an email, but he might have.
Okay, I didn't get that. But we have plenty of time for the next week to get that.
What time, do we give all vehicles or?
Do you know what time it is? Yeah, we get more information on that.
Seventeen to one.
Okay. But that's September first, so we've got a meeting. The grand amendment.
See, it doesn't say the time, just an Earl County news tribune car show people.
Okay. We're still gonna need to put nineteen down, probably gonna jump us up a year. And the grand amendment, I don't know what that is, do you put that on there? Bill, do you know what that grand amendment is on the agenda? Do you put it on there?
Uh, no. I know she called and told me to put grant amendment on there.
She told you.
Um, Pam, um, Keppler.
Oh, okay.
So now you know what it is?
They were talking about doing some kind of amendment, and then we have to pick a.
The, um, in- engineer.
The engineer.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to have a special meeting to pick an engineer. They told us we had to have a work session or something and go through them, and have to interview two people.
Oh, it's one of the free and the.
Yeah, I just wanna. They said you just can't pick one, you gotta interview some people. Cause I just, we, we all said Thrasher, because Thrasher's familiar with everything.
Yeah, they're welcome.
But they said, well, in the process, you gotta do interviews and stuff, so.
Cause they weren't done two faces.
Yeah. They know everything.
Oh, that's why I'm kinda like you, I just.
Jump ship in the middle of.
Yeah, I just understood with same ones, it's a different ship. But we'll see, if they have an offer, we'll put anything.
How many do we have to interview?
Two, they said two.
They, two.
They went to do three, so no saving.
We have three to send you literature, so probably be the three.
One for each other?
Yeah.
Okay. And I found your, your letter, Ernie, due to the storms that impacted the eastern panhandle, the federal government has declared the local governments and certain private organizations are eligible for federal funding to repair and replace damaged infrastructure facilities. Do we have something that was damaged?
Uh, Ractiel's sliding again.
Okay.
Our tank road is sliding a little, so I'll contact.
You gotta contact Angie Carroll.
Yeah.
Actually, we, we got some. So we might be able to, we'll try to get it squished and very high, you know, that, that'd just help out.
And if you saw in your little packet, um, do you have this dog now, Jim?
Yes.
Jim has a dog named Spirit, that he would like to be his canine dog. Spirit is a shepherd, shepherd mix dog who is, is from organization you meet in, in your fiancee.
Yes.
Foster, Friends for Life. Friends for Life works with another organization, Happy Hounds, where the dog came from. Spirit's already trained with obedience. She has started on training on tracking, but was stopped by the prior trainer. She has an excellent drive for narcotics detection. The training will take a few weeks to complete, to have her certified. I'm going to start her training on narcotics this week. Rob Smith, I re-certify Spirit when I complete her training. She is very friendly and will be great for public relations. Utilizing a police canine will be a great asset for the department and the town. In one month without a canine, we have already written three citations for narcotics, and we're, we're able to seize them and get them off the street. Having a canine will help a great deal with recovering more narcotics off the street. Do I have a motion that we, let? Spirit be the new canine.
I'll make a motion for Spirit to be our new canine at the first quarter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Got Spirit on the list. The signature on the ordinance for cross connection control.
That's what I brought up before, we couldn't find the original.
Okay.
Uh, it looked like it was around two thousand five, six, when it was adopted. And we couldn't find it.
So we have to.
We, and I had scoured it, the health department, and the signature page on the one they had wasn't there.
Oh, really? Where else would there be copies?
I have no idea. We looked through all the weapons books in here, the only copy I found was over in the garage on the bottom of one of the workshelves. It's already drafted, it's been passed in the past, I don't know if you'd have to go through the three readings again and.
So it'd be amended.
To be adopted, to be, to be adopted.
And then, once it's passed, then I can start sending letters out to the ones that need have backflow prevention in their facilities legally.
Anybody have anything else?
I need to go to executive. Make a motion to go into executive sessions, got personnel, nothing to be very long. So, can I add note for Ernie, just to say?
Well, Peyton?
Uh.
Opposed?